Rental house.
Okay.
Right next to us.
To the west.
Put it back into.
I'll call the meeting to order. Obviously Sandy's not going to be here, right?
Yep.
Okay, would you call, roll call, Adam?
Counselperson Brunie.
I am here.
Counselperson Brunie.
Yes.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
Counselperson McGinty.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thanks for being here, Dale and Steve. Nice to have you in our presence this evening. If you want to make any comments on anything that isn't on this, agenda number three is your opportunity to do that. With that being said, let's move on to item number two, consent of agenda A, approval of agenda B, approval of the minutes of the January 28, 2014 council meeting, and C, claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent of agenda.
I'll second it.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve consent of agenda A, approval of agenda B, approval of the minutes of January 28, 2014 council meeting, and C, claims. Is there any questions?
In the claims, the note of copier, that's monthly.
That's the lease. I actually, I'll have to look if it's, yeah, it is monthly, yeah.
And I see we have no flags, thank you.
Any other questions?
That was quite an ordeal. They were about a foot two long, so we had to do a little cutting on the posts to get them to fit.
Okay, if there aren't any further questions, call for a vote.
Counselperson, uh, counselperson was...
Bill made the motion.
Okay, thank you.
No, actually Gary made the motion, I'm going to second it.
Well, I made the motion, that's right, you made the second one.
I'm out of my comfort level tonight.
That was a test question.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Counselperson Brunie.
Yes.
Counselperson Brenney.
Yes.
Counselperson McGinty.
Yes.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
I'll get it right at some point tonight.
Thank you. Item number three, citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda.
I just got one thing. I talked, I left a message for Nancy and I told her about the storm removal on the parking and stuff that could be done. I understand totally about water, that's got to be top priority. I guess another thing I'd like to ask John, since I am the past president, everybody comes to see me, be thinking that I'm still the president of the chamber, have people been served about their side? And that's where I'm going to stop.
It's being worked on, I guess I'm waiting for the city to finish theirs before I go.
Okay. You know, showing sidewalks and stuff like that.
Have people been served at all this winter?
Yeah, yeah, I think if you look at my last one month, we did forty something.
Really?
It's an ongoing, it's just like the grass, mowing the grass.
Really?
They got to be told and...
Reminded.
All hands.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay. Item number four miscellaneous, A is introduction and first reading of ordinance number 2014-253 entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sac, City Iowa by Amending Provisions Pertaining to Sewer Service Charges.
Introduction.
I would introduce the first reading of ordinance number 2014-253 entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sac City Iowa by Amending Provisions Pertaining to the Sewer Service Charges.
Thank you.
You'll see a couple of things here, and I'll be happy to talk some detail about this for you. I've said to probably many of you since last week that we got a rare treat, the auditor was here early enough for us to talk with her prior to finalizing the budget this year. So there's an advantage to that, and there's a disadvantage to that. The advantage is, is you get to incorporate the changes she recommends. The disadvantage is, is you get to incorporate the recommendations that she makes and do so in such a short window of time. One of the things that we discovered during that discussion was concerns that the sewer rates that we had installed a year ago were still not meeting expectations. Kind of two things happened last week. I got my six months, my six-month review of our budget so far this year, and I got to see the last, we only had about a month on it last year. And so, looking at the first seven months, eight months of the rate increase, we are not seeing the type of numbers coming in we needed in order to deal with the funds necessary to support the debt service amount in sanitary sewer. Kind of give you some of the short details, and I had a little write-up, and I don't see that they made it into the sheets that you were handed here tonight. The debt service is about $285,000 a year. Prior to this project, the operating cost at the plant was in the neighborhood of about $220,000 a year, if that gives you any idea how much money we're talking about on the debt service side. One thing that number, that 220 does not factor in, and you've heard me say this before, is about $90,000 worth of additional cost that was unanticipated at the facility on an annual basis. To answer a little more clearly on what those costs are, you've got an increased cost, it used to cost us about $300 a year to provide oil to run the motors on the RBC units. It's now costing us in the neighborhood of $4,000 to $5,000 to run those motors. Or, I said $4,000 to $5,000, right? Okay. Then, the next thing is, is that by modernizing the plant, you're required to meet new OSHA standards and DNR standards. Part of those standards were air exchanges in the facility. And no matter how much they tell you, that you, they develop certain products to try to retain the heat by exchanging the air, you simply do have some loss of heat that is going to result in increases. We've, to some degree over the last few years, been trying to figure out exactly how much of an increase we were going to impact, and how much of that we could maintain. In the case of electricity and heat, we haven't really found any opportunities to adjust those in a manner that would save us money. In a result, we're seeing in the neighborhood of about a $50,000 to $60,000 a year increase in keeping the facility cool and heat. The reason why you have to do that is, is for the bugs to do their job in the RBC units, they have to be maintained at a particular temperature. The other element that was, that increased cost at the operations at the plant was water. Now, water is one that we've been somewhat able to curb through some changing of some practices. When they first installed the new screens in the intake room, we were operating with the water running on them constantly, 24 hours a day. After talking with the manufacturer and the engineers, we were able to work out a new exercising program of those screens so that we could limit the amount of water we were using. Initially, we were using about $30,000, or $30,000 more of water a year, our water went up to about $30,000 a year. We've been able to push that back down to about half of that, to about $15,000 as a result of that. So those are all just operating costs at the facility. None of those were dramatically included in the original plan of the project. For those of you who were involved in the project, you might also remember that originally the estimates for the facility were about $5.2 million. In the end, with change orders, we ended up spending closer to about 6.1 to 6.2 on the actual facility, which was still within our limits, but of course, in the original financial plan was not what we had included. Now, I've talked with Tracy Sebold at Iowa Finance Authority. We might have some options that we can look at long-term, but I really do think that something that we necessarily need to do, at least for the next 12-month cycle, is we need to show them that we're taking every action necessary, not only to catch up with this problem, but to get in front of this problem. And right now, that's not happening based upon the rates we have coming in. What I've asked Tracy is, is if it could be possible for the city to consider doing a refinancing of the debt. You might remember when we originally considered the project, we considered both 20 years, 25 years, and 30 years for a repayment plan on the project. And we decided that based on the most likely life expectancy of the updated facility, the 25 years made the most sense. It may or may not be possible to extend that and refinance it to a 30-year, which would of course, reduce a little bit of what you're paying on an annual basis. I haven't heard back from him, because I know what Iowa Finance Authority does, is they bond for money, and then you borrow against that bond. So there's a pretty good chance that he might say, well, we've already sold the bonds, the bonds are backed up by your debt, you really can't be making changes like that. So that's a possibility. I'm just asking the question to see if that's even an opportunity to assist us in the long-term on this project. The other thing that might be possible is, with the restructuring might be to adjust the interest rate, reducing the interest rate. And I've got that question in. I'm less, I believe that one's less likely than the, to the extension of terms. But we'll see. It doesn't hurt to ask anything and have Tracy to say no.
What's the current interest rate?
Three and a half percent. All in all, what this boils down to is based upon the first roughly eight months, seven to eight months of the new rates, it's obvious that we're not making the significant enough dent that we had hoped to. The problem becomes, is the longer we put off doing what's necessary to get in front of it, we not only find ourselves in a situation of not bringing enough money to cover the debt service in, but we also have to borrow more money internally to, against ourselves from other fund sources in order to pay that service off. Which means that now you not only have your debt payment to SRF, to Iowa Finance Authority, but now you've got an internal loan you owe to yourself that is only making the problem worse. That's why I say that it's, we've gotten to the point, this reminds me of the water situation back in 2008. We found ourselves in 2008 with a situation where we had bonded and borrowed money to buy water meters. And, and that had been done a couple of years before 2008, I'm sorry. But in 2008, what we discovered was that the cost associated with that debt was outpacing the rates in Water Department, and the Water Department was losing a significant amount of money as a result of that. So what we did is, is we increased rates as an attempt to deal with that issue. Now, that's what we're looking at here, is an adjustment being necessary to meet those debt. Now, there's different ways you can approach that. One of them, and I had a sheet sitting on your desk tonight, I would say page two is what you need to look at. Page two, the first, the first box will show you what the current setup is for both a resident and a commercial customer. Low user, I have, and I'm doing this based on the resident to kind of give you just an impact comparison. A low user is rated at about 1,500 gallons. An average user is rated at about 3,800 gallons. A high user is gauged at 8,000 gallons. Just so that you know the difference in the determinations between a low, an average, and a high user in the system. If you looked at the mixed level adjustment, what the mixed level adjustment was, is trying to spread the cost evenly on a dollar-by-dollar basis between residents and commercials. And if you look at the next box, the minor compensation for usage reduction, this is a pure rate-only adjustment. Now, in other words, if, all the adjustment we're doing is only on the rate side of things, instead of on the base fee side of things. The problem with most of your rate-only adjustments, and we weighed heavily upon that last year when we made our adjustment, was that it usually results in people significantly trying to reduce their water usage. And as a result, you don't end up bringing in the revenue that's necessary in order to make the system work. So there's a lot more unpredictability when you build it into the rate side of things. The next box is base-only adjustment. That's if we were to decide we didn't want to make any changes to the rate and put it all into base. The difficulties with a base-only adjustment is, while you're guaranteeing the money coming in, the additional increase coming in, what you have in that situation is, is you have a situation where people who are low users, for instance, are seeing a significantly more increase than, from a percentage standpoint than other people do. The last one is your weighted usage adjustment. And what this is, is this takes into consideration a little bit of, a little bit of both, but it is more focused on getting most of it towards usage rather than from the base. As I said before, one of the dangers of using the rate as a way to regulate it, is that you can always anticipate a certain amount of adjustment in usage. The problem with a rate-only adjustment too, which was box three, is that people that have a water leak would of course be impacted even more in those type of situations then. So what was originally provided for you on the ordinance, the way the ordinance is written, is the mixed-level adjustment version that you see on number two. You're well within your rights, as we discussed this this evening, to amend the ordinance as presented, take a vote on that action, and then vote on the proposed amended ordinance at that time. So there would be two votes if you're going to make a change to it.
You said this is based on the mixed level though.
Yes, it is based...
The mixed level, we would just...
Yes, there'd be no need to change the ordinance. A couple of things, other external things to take into consideration as we go through this discussion. One is, is that property taxes based upon the budget, we're going to be discussing later, are going down about, it's roughly 80 cents per thousand. So people are going to experience a reduction in their property taxes in this next fiscal year, so there's some offsetting going on with that. It varies based upon what your valuation of course is, and there's no need to really go into the details of that. Just because you're on a fixed income doesn't mean you might not live in a house that's worth $100,000, you know, it doesn't really work out that way sometimes. The other element to take into consideration is, there was some discussion about the other utilities and their situation. Right now with, right now what we're looking at is, the last time we increased our gas collection rate was the late 90s. And that's the last time we increased our part of the gas utility collection. We, last time we increased water was in late 2008. The last time we increased the storm sewer utility was in 2006. The last time we increased garbage was actually about, it was just about a year ago. It was just about, a little over a year ago, I believe. And then sewer, of course, we made some adjustments early last year in it, as I was saying earlier. So that kind of gives you some perspective as what we've done with our rates, because I know Gary and I have had a lot of internal conversations about the possibility of setting up some type of planned adjustment within our rates. It's a little bit more difficult to have that discussion in the gas fund where it's more commodity-based, because we have less control over what the rate's going to be from month to month. But in the other utilities, our typical practice has been, and this is the practice for the majority of cities in the state of Iowa, is a step approach. Step approach is, is when you need to increase it, you increase it to meet your needs. Usually the con of doing that is that it's usually higher when you do do it, more infrequent, but it is higher when you do it, and it's more of a steam when you do it that way. When you do it in the more gradual annual basis system, it's, the one thing there is, is it's built in. So if it goes, if the cost of doing business goes up 2.9%, your rate in that, and all of them would go up 2.9% whether you actually needed the funds internally in that budget or not. I've talked recently with a city or two that is using that type of method, that is putting that method in in the last couple of places, last couple of years, because I know we've talked about it some. And the pushback I got to them is, it's not really working for them. They're finding that in some areas, while it's creating reserve situations, in other areas, it's only meaning that they're having to consider two increases in a particular year instead of one to deal with issues. That's probably making this a lot broader conversation than our issue at hand. Our issue at hand more has to do with the sanitary sewer and the cost associated with operating the plant, and with the debt service that we currently are facing.
So it's not a question if we want to, or if we would like to, it's a question of necessity, and so just have to decide...
How we're going to do it.
Which one of these? And you're suggesting that we use the mixed level based on all the information that we have?
Yeah. There's no perfect process to use.
Right. But this looks like it averages out costs a little better.
Not really.
No?
Because if you look at the low user, it's a 25% increase, you look at the high user, it's a 16% increase.
Which do you suggest?
I guess I would suggest the weighted usage adjustment. That one is closer to a flat, a flat percentage across there. And if you're looking at the budget, what you're trying to increase, it looks like it's about a 16% increase, you're hoping to affect from the change in our income, and that kind of, that comes closer to spreading that evenly among the three categories of
The weaker portion of the weighted use is, of course, you're putting more of it in the usage column, rather than in the base column. The impact, and I mean, you can look at the numbers as well as I do, the impact on a low user, the difference in an impact to a low user is going to be about $1.35. The impact to a high user is going to be about $1.60, so...
So what you're saying is if we were to go with the weighted usage one?
There's more risk.
Because people will probably use less water, and then we won't be making as much money in the end anyway.
Well, not only not more money in the sewer, but not more money in the water as well.
The other thing I would say about that is, the current water rates, I believe, were 8.75 for the initial and 6.75 per thousand. Was I reading that right in my council book?
That's probably the old version, I believe it's, I think it's, I think it's 8.75 and seven, if you look at it. I'd have to look at it Bruce, I don't have my book here, but there's been an update since then.
It's also keeping the, I mean, so if it's 8.75 and seven, you're looking at about 80%, the per thousand is about 80% of the usage in water, is that working out pretty well for us?
It has never brought in the numbers we initially anticipated it to, but it did come in sufficient enough to meet our needs.
And if we look at the mixed level, you're looking at nearly double of the base rate to the per thousand. I mean, if you're trying to do... The 8.30, 12.50 is closer to the 8.75, seven, if we're trying to...
Well, of all the options, the one I would not recommend would be the, would be the rate-only adjustment. I would have to, while it is an option, I would heavily recommend that the rate-only adjustment not really be considered.
Do any others have any comments or discussion around this, or questions?
I would move to amend ordinance number 214-253 to reflect the numbers in the weighted usage adjustment, rather than the mixed level adjustment.
So basically what you're looking at is, from the current model, if we go with the mixed one, you're only looking at usage rate of increase of 85 cents, right? Am I looking at that right?
It would go up...
And then...
No, no.
Base fee.
This is the current one.
Okay.
So it would go up $1.30.
I'm back on the mixed level.
Oh, yeah.
I'm looking at the mixed level.
Sure, yeah, okay.
So that one would go up to 85 cents for the usage rate, and then, what, $4 for the base?
Yep.
And then, okay.
Whereas the one below, you'd only go up $2 for the base fee, but you'd go up $1.30 per thousand usage.
So the motion is to use the weighted usage adjustment, is that correct? Yes. I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to use the weighted usage adjustment in ordinance number 2000...
The motion has been to modify the ordinance to...
To amend, to amend the ordinance, to use the weighted usage adjustment in ordinance number 2014-253, an ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the City of Sac City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to sewer service charges. Are there any additional questions?
We will then have to have a sec, if this passes or fails, we still have the original issue of passing the first reading on the floor.
That's what I thought we were doing, making a motion to pass the first reading.
No, his motion to amend.
A motion to amend it, okay. This is on the amendment.
I want to amend the ordinance as written, which shows the mixed-level adjustment to a weighted usage adjustment.
Right, okay. And it's been seconded. So if there aren't any further questions, I'll call for a vote.
Counselperson Brunie.
No.
Counselperson Brenney.
Yes.
Counselperson McGinty.
Yes.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Okay, it has been amended, it is now ready for consideration for first reading.
I'll make the motion to, with the amendment...
It's already amended, so...
Right, with the amendment, already passed, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Sac City by amending provisions pertaining to sewer service charges.
To pass the first reading.
To pass the first reading, and that would be number 2014-253.
Okay.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to pass the first reading of ordinance number 2014-253 as amended, an ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the City of Sac City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to sewer service charges. Would you call for a vote?
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Counselperson Brunie.
No.
Counselperson McGinty.
Yes.
Counselperson Brenney.
Yes.
Four miscellaneous, which, B?
Before we move on, do we need to do any explanation, you know, via the media and so on, or to explain why? It's a lot easier to accept something knowing why.
I'll be happy to share that. I figured that would be something we'd be doing. I kind of wanted to know what we would likely, how it looked like we were likely going to go, so I could communicate that a little bit better. But I will be happy now to start sharing that information.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if it's the time to discuss it, but looking at the storm sewer, I mean, I wonder if it would be possible to do a dollar reduction per month for one year for that, to help do a little bit of the offset, which puts it back a little bit, maybe be a good motion, or a good direction for us to try and build some rapport with the community and say, we're really trying to work with you. I mean, if there were some other, we've got a property tax offset, I know that the average home in Sac City is valued, taxable valuation is about 32,000, so we're looking at...
Does that include commercial?
The average home.
Okay.
The average homeowner. And so, so we're saving them 20 some, like $24 in taxation, and if we're looking at $6, $7 a month, I mean, if we could do something to say, we're trying to work with you, I think that would be a really good message to send to the community.
Is there wiggle room in that fund?
There is, I mean, there's ramifications of any action you would take. Of course, it's not on the agenda tonight, this would just simply be follow-up to this discussion, it would be something for us to discuss at the following council meeting. But just initially, off the top of my head, the cons I would think of, of course, is projects that we want to do, and I mean, we're not talking about a large amount of money, but it could impact our planning, our CIP planning for projects in that fund, you know, I can't say for sure without doing the numbers, but there is the potential that they could cause that type of impact. But other than that...
Since we can't act on it, would you like to bring the information and put it on the agenda for the next council meeting?
Sure, sure.
Is that okay?
I'll mull over the pros and cons.
I just wanted to, I wanted to throw it out, because, I mean, I think it's important that when we're talking about rather substantial increases to the public, that we also let them know that we're looking for ways to work with them. You know, one thing though that I, you know, after having served on the finance committee, and we just met Monday morning, or yesterday morning, I guess it was, at 7:00, and we're in a position where we're just trying to recover from some major expenses that we've had, purchase of the Bobcat, the facade program...
Purchase of the Bobcat, the SOT program, among others. And so we're at a recovery time where we really don't have much wiggle room for any even capital improvement expenditures. Expenditures and the city departments have cut back considerably. Conceptually, it would be nice to be able to reduce and so show good favor, but, the but is always the big canceling word. Is this the time that we need to, you know, be considering that, considering that, you know, we're looking at decreased property taxes? Our income is going down. Whether or not the state in the future backfills the shortfall that we're going to experience going ahead. It's always easier to decrease than it is to raise. You know, yeah, the timing would be good, you know, show good faith in one area, but, you know, before we think about getting trigger happy with that kind of option, I think we need to look where we're at, you know, overall financially too.
Well, I think it'd be okay if he brought the information to us and that's all that we're doing.
To consider all that.
That's all we're doing. Putting on the agenda for next time, since we have no real information to base any decision on at this time. Okay, then we'll move on to B. For B is consideration of setting a public hearing on the possible vacation and sale of the East-West Alley lying between block 42, between lots 2, 3, 4, 5, and lots 6, 7, 8, 9 in Platts Edition Sac City, Inc., Sac City, Iowa.
I no longer have any parties opposing this.
So all the concerns have been met then?
Yes, I do not currently have any.
Good.
So, when would the next date be, Adam?
Well, we would probably want to move the date that was originally on this because you might see that the public hearing was originally set to be at the next council meeting, but it's always easier if you delay it. You know, we delayed the action for two weeks. It probably makes sense to get it into the paper to meet minimum running requirements. It probably makes sense to, to move forward that with doing the public hearing on March, on March 11th.
Would that be the same date as the budget now?
Yes, I believe it will be.
And you and Tom Krabs don't see any possibility of that ever being used? That still stands, does it not?
No.
Okay, someone like to make a motion that the public hearing for this is on March 11th?
I'd also move to set the public hearing on March 11th for the possible vacation and sale of the East-West Alley lying between, within block 42, lots 2, 3, 4, and 5, and lots 6, 7, and 8 in Platts Edition Sac City, Iowa.
6, 7, 8, 9.
And 6, 7, 8, 9.
I'll second that.
10?
Thanks, Teresa.
Motion has been made and seconded to set the public hearing for the vacation and sale of the East-West Alley lying within block 42 between lots 2, 3, 4, 5, and lots 6, 7, 8, 9 in Platts Edition Sac City, Inc., Sac City, Iowa to March 11th, 2014.
11, yeah, yeah.
March 11th.
Yep.
Would you call, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson McGinty.
Yes.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Counselperson Bruny.
Yes.
Counselperson Brenney.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. For miscellaneous, item C is opening and review of cemetery bids and possible awards.
I did not receive any bids during the allotted time set for the, set for the notices. I have since that bid period ended received one bid for the, for the services. It is up to the council whether or not they want to accept a late bid or not. So primarily your options right now would be to either accept the, accept the late bid so that we can open it and review it and possibly make award, or your option is to, to take no action in order, in essence, continue to set this as a rejected bid and then we would go back out for services again. Those would be your two options. We received one.
For the cemetery?
Yes.
One late one.
Yes, it was not received within time.
Is there any discussion around this?
If we were to rebid it, would we reasonably expect more bidders?
It's hard for me to know. You know, there's...
We still have time.
Was this the time, is this the time that normally the bids have gone out for this?
Usually in the, between January and March is when the process goes through, yes.
I think to make it as competitive as possible to, you know, reopen it. Sure, we have one bid there, but if we reopen it and considering that the bid was late, this way there won't be any objection to it if we reopen it and if the same party is still interested, he or she can still bid.
Put in another bid on time.
I would just say that you're kind of setting a precedent. If you start taking bids late, then every time, you know, bids come in late, then we have to think about that. So I would hope that you would also consider that.
Now, that would be considered, if you chose not to open it, it does not require action if you choose not to open it. If you wanted to open it, then you would make a motion to accept the bid. Otherwise, this would, this issue would die and be reposted. I guess what I'm getting at is, don't make a motion to, if, for instance, it sounds like Bill's leaning towards not opening it. There's, there would be no need to take an action to make a motion to reject the bid. The bid would not be, was not...
It would just not be opened.
It just wouldn't be open.
But this would in no way hamper the bid on the second time around from the same individual, correct?
No, it would not.
They don't have to do anything different. They just send, they just bring it in in a timely manner. Is that correct? Okay.
But then, do we need to make a motion tonight to have you open it up again and put it out there to reopen the bids?
It is not necessary. You technically never have to do that. I usually do it to make sure that there's support to do so. I know in this case there is, so I will go ahead and take the action of reposting it. I just can't accept the bid without your action.
Yeah, I just don't think we should open it to be, like Bill said, to be fair, since it was late.
And there may only be one more, but it still needs to be done in a timely fashion. I mean, there only may be this one, and that's fine, but...
Well, if we reopen it, the one that we've received is here on time? Or does it have to be resubmitted?
It has to be, it has to be resubmitted. I'll just turn around and try it back in again, that's all.
Yeah, we would notify the bidders that it has been rejected. Now, I would not open this because that would put them at a disadvantage then.
Right, we're not, no.
This will be returned to them unopened because it would not be fair to put them in a position.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
If it's open for rebid and that bid throws out, so the price could be changed, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Because it's pretty, I didn't know there was one bid I had turned it in. So you guys are taking a gamble. It could cost you more money in the future by not looking at it and seeing what it is. That's what I'm stating to you guys, because it's not, it's a pretty fair bid. It's not like, I don't know, there was one person, I guarantee you it meant a little higher.
Right.
I've always felt like I've done it for a fair market value in this town, and I always want it back, but I do feel it's worth more than what the bid is. But I'm stating to you guys, if we can open it up for bids, if I'm the one that comes back in bids again, it could cost you guys a few thousand dollars more for the year because I think it's worth that, but I would have tried to be the best to get it.
Well, that's your choice. Larry?
My question is, if you reject that bid, what if you don't get any bids? Then what are you going to do?
Well, we always have...
This is a flat statement.
To be honest, we have considered those contingencies before, Gary.
Gary?
Gary. It's been a long day. The, you know, one option that we had considered in the past, and we have it in the last few years, is taking this pro, this process back in-house. I mean, it used to be done in-house up till about, what, 12 years ago or so?
30 probably.
Well, you think it was 30?
Yeah, you guys haven't done it for a long time.
Yeah, we, we used to do it in-house and...
The experts used to do it back in the 70s.
I know about four years ago, there was a serious discussion by one of our committees about the potential of, of the idea of whether or not it would be advantageous to brand it in-house or not. But now, would I want to do it in such a short run type of situation like that? No. Nobody wins in that type of situation. That's something that would need to be reevaluated over a period of time.
No, and it wouldn't be fair if we opened that bid. It wouldn't be fair to do so. No, it's not going to be opened. And, and it's not anything against you, it's just that, that's our, it's our protocol, and if we change the protocol, then you have to do it every time.
I actually came down here talking about something else and I asked him and he said it was already due up.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for bidding. Hope you bid again.
Okay, the next one is opening and review of Fish House Roof Project bids and possible award.
Okay, I received one bid. This time it was timely. I did receive one bid for the Fish House Roof Project, and so I will open it. There is a copy of insurance here, and I have one bid. The bid is from REM Construction. The bid amount is There is an additional option to replace some boards on the north side of the building, and that would be an additional $300 if we chose to, to accept that additional option on the...
Grant, isn't it?
That's, that's part of the grant from the county in Delmont and also from the community foundation.
Did you allot a certain amount when you were talking about this?
Right at $3,500.
Okay.
I'd have to look, I'd have to look at it for sure. I mean, it was...
It's consistent with what the expectations were.
It's, it's pretty consistent with what the expectations were.
I'd like to see the park board take a look at that bid though, if that's possible, see what the recommendation is.
The park board, since they handle this.
Yeah, that's their expertise supposedly. Does that need to be in a motion?
Yes, you would make a motion to, to deliver this bid to the park board for consideration. What I would do, and of course, you're the representative for the park board, so you would know this. What I would do is present the bid for them, tell them this is the little bidder on the project, and I would identify for them the option, ask them if they want to accept the option, and...
I want to make sure stuff that's being done, so it doesn't change its integrity.
Sure, sure.
I think the specs were written...
Were they pretty?
The specs were written so that they would not change the integrity of the...
That's what I'm, that's what I'm concerned about.
Can we move to accept it pending the park board's approval?
Yes, you could do so.
What is your timeframe where this has to be paid for your grant and everything? I think that's what you're getting at.
We need to probably have everything pretty well done by the 1st of July.
Well, another option that you could make is, and you might remember, we've done this on a couple of projects. You could make a motion to accept the bid and recognize REM Construction as the preferred vendor for this project. And, and then we could move forward with talking with the park board about the final details of the project, about whether or not to accept the, since you only had one bid, you have some flexibility here.
You ready to make a motion of any type?
I would move to accept REM Construction as the preferred vendor for the, the roof on the Fish House and have the park board look at the bid and discuss what recommendations they would have in the final product.
Okay. No second?
Sure, I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to accept the REM bid for the roof on the Fish House with the addition that the park board will coordinate the specifications on that bid. Is that correct? Okay. Are there any further questions? If not, a call for a vote.
Counselperson Bruny.
Yes.
Counselperson Brenney.
Yes.
Counselperson McGinty.
Yes.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Thank you. Item for miscellaneous F is consideration of adoption of final city five-year capital improvement plan and set public hearing date and time.
How about E?
Oh, I did. I'm sorry, I circled it and forgot to do it. I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. How about if we go back to E, consideration of adoption of final city budget for fiscal year 2014, '15, and set a public hearing date and time for that?
As much as we don't like to skip this one?
No, we don't have to skip it.
Well, I had the pleasure of spending two days last week rewriting a good portion of our, our budget. It was nice and quick and, but I do appreciate a lot of, a lot of assistance in taking actions by our department heads. And primarily, it had a lot to do with our discussion with the auditor. There was primarily what the auditor's situation was is that she did not, she did not believe that we had necessarily taken enough action yet to deal with the over-collection, particularly on employee healthcare. You might have just seen in the paper today that the county is expecting a quite substantial increase in healthcare costs. We have not, and when we build the budget, there's a lot of guesswork that goes into both your expectations for your insurance on your properties and your benefits, particularly healthcare benefits for the employees. Bless you. We discuss it with the carrier and try to make it as accurate as possible. In this case, we anticipated some stiff increases. A lot of it associated with what you see as the Affordable Care Act. We, in our little group, have not seen those increases. You couple that with our new labor deal, which saved us all that money, and we move from, it's actually a good problem to have, I guess, in some way. We're ahead on the healthcare issue, and as a result, we've been overestimating what we need to pay our healthcare bills. And what the auditor has asked us to do is move more quickly to deal with our healthcare reductions. I have been dragging my feet a little bit because I keep waiting for the other shoe to drop with Affordable Care, and like I heard from the county, at a county meeting about eight months ago, that we were going to expect a 32% increase in one year. We haven't seen anything like that happen, and if, and I'm not complaining. But to deal with it, we had to make a couple of changes in our budget. Particularly on the CERT page, you will see that there was some changes to both the collection for FICA and IFRS, a small modification there, but a pretty hefty adjustment for employee, other employee benefits, which in essence is the healthcare. There's some other things in there, but primarily that's healthcare collection. There was also some adjustments to a deal with some over-collection in self-insurance costs as well, and you'll see that reflected on there as well. What this means to the general public, property taxes go down. And you might remember that two weeks ago, when we talked about a budget, we were talking about a budget with a slight increase in property taxes. Now we're talking about a budget with a decent reduction in property taxes. You couple that with a couple of other changes that occurred in the actual budget plan. One of them was that she had asked us in the future not to be identifying our sewer plant project debt as part of debt service, that we should be showing, reflecting that in the enterprise fund as a capital project in the enterprise fund, a repayment on debt for the capital project in the enterprise fund. And so I moved that in this budget. Usually, we transfer money to debt service to pay for that project at the end of the year. Well, if it's sitting in enterprise fund, there's no need to transfer that money anymore, so I took that out of the budget as well. A direct result of some of the immediate actions of dealing with the healthcare cost and the insurance cost is there's some concern about the rollover amounts sitting in the general fund. I mean, I don't think it's news to anyone that we've, we, in the last year, we've taken more in than, we've spent more than we've taken in. And as a result of that, the transfers out of the general fund back to the trust and agency accounts for healthcare come at a bad time for us. And as a result, we did talk with the department heads that are funded through the general fund about making some modifications to their expectations on financing for the... about making some modifications to their expectations on financing for the next fiscal year. What that would allow us to do is to start to restore a better reserve level in the general fund more quickly. Um, and, uh, one of the discussions I had with the, um, with the department heads is, is that what this is, is a one-year opportunity to kind of put a correction into the general fund. John had the, that conversation with me, uh, Brandy at the library, Tom, Sandy. They are the four primary department heads that were impacted by this discussion. Um, they all gave something back in the process, you know, in different levels at different places. Some, some had more wiggle room than others, but what they really looked for was challenges within their budgets of where they could cut back some money in order to give back to the general fund so that the reserve could start to stabilize. I always feel comfortable with a reserve in the neighborhood of between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, in two thousand eight, when most of us started here, well, I guess, some of us still started here. There, there's some new faces since then, um, our rollover amount that year was about sixty-five thousand dollars, and we weren't comfortable with it then. And, uh, in the last few years, if you don't count the DOT transfer of property that we received on the road project, we'd been maintaining between a hundred and ninety and two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which is right where we wanted to be. Um, based on some of the things, and I'm not going to go in, because I don't want to give the impression that the money we spent, uh, doing different things on wasn't necessary or was improper. Everything we spent money on was needed, but the end result is, is that right now, I'm running a line of about thirty thousand dollars is what we'd be rolling over into next year. So, um, where we found ourselves in the discussion I had with the finance committee, uh, yesterday morning, is what that means is, is that we want to take some steps to scale back, um, over the next six to eighteen months some of our expenditures in the general fund to allow the general fund to start building back up more quickly. Because, um, you know, a lot of the efficiencies and the financial savings that we built in, in two thousand eight to get us up to that two hundred thousand, they've been exhausted. There, it's not like you can reinvent the wheel and that, oh, we can do this again, and that money's still there to save. Once you change something and save that money, you can't go back to that will. So, um, um, so we have less tools available for us to pump that up relatively quickly. So, it's going to be a gradual step to regrow the general fund. Um, does that mean that we ignore any financial opportunities to come our way? No, that doesn't say, necessarily mean that, but at the same time, we need to be very critical about what type of financial spending we have out of the general fund. Um, the, uh, the other major changes to this, really, there aren't any. That's primarily the changes that are discussed in here. Um, probably an area that you'd want to have some discussion on, and, um, I just typed this up this morning. You know, we asked the department heads to take actions next year to cut back their budgets. You'll see the community request form was the first page sitting in front of you. You might see what was on here from two thousand thirteen, fourteen, that's allocated for this first, this current fiscal year, and what was requested, uh, for this fiscal year. What was allocated last year was eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars, which was up on, which was up over six thousand dollars over the previous year. Um, the requested amount was another nine thousand dollars over what we had received from the previous year, or what we'd allocated. Um, my recommendation, the recommendation we were presenting to the council would have been moving that up about five hundred dollars. Um, and so, current, what you see is the current recommendation for the finance committee is what you see under recommended fourteen fifteen. I did play around with some numbers today, if, uh, in particularly take into consideration some of the fund sources. At the very bottom, you see a running total of how much is coming out of each fund. Those changes, uh, those changes reflect, you could see some financial change, two thousand from the general fund, about eight hundred from the storm sewer fund, and about three thousand, thirty-five hundred from the, uh, gas fund. Um, it's small dollars. It, it is small dollars. Um, but, um, you, you know, the one comment I heard when I started showing this to people this afternoon is, is, um, is, you know, we're asking the department heads to cut, you know, should we be funding at the same levels to these secondary parties that we give grant money to if we're taking stiff cuts internally to deal with issues? But, um, I, I leave that for you guys to discuss as part of this overall budget package. The idea tonight is, is that you would approve a final version of a budget by the end of this evening, and that we would move forward with setting a public hearing date for this, uh, budget. The public hearing for this budget, uh, would take place
March eleventh.
Which would take place on March eleventh, so it could be submitted to the county auditor, uh, by March fifteenth.
So, the budget as, as proposed with the, the recommended community request is basically a hundred and eight thousand and change, additional rollover, is that right?
Give me a little more detail on what you mean, Bruce.
Okay, all right, so, so the spending, income versus spending, basically, we're taking in about a hundred and eight thousand more than we're planning to spend?
Yes.
One oh eight, two fifty, or whatever?
Yes, and remember, in the end, we can put, a, a, and this is the one mistake a lot of people make, and this was the message I had for the department heads. We can put any numbers we want on these forms. It's our responsibility, once to put on the forms at the city, to then make these a reality. And, um, and so, yes, the proposed plan is that we would, uh, it would be a hundred and eight thousand dollars.
And we've been running on what? How much was our reserve last year?
If you don't count the DOT number, DOT number, it was about two hundred and ten to two hundred and twenty thousand.
And that's without counting the DOT?
That's without counting the DOT money. But we, I mean, well, and like I said, I don't really want to badmouth any of the projects, but we, you, you know, we, for instance, uh, the thirty-two thousand dollars we spent on the Bobcat, a portion of that comes out of the general fund. That was unexpected opportunity that came away. The departments were saying they were needing it, so we agreed to it. But that thirty-two thousand dollars comes from somewhere, and that's, I mean, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that action, but there are consequences through our financial actions.
There was an additional fifty thousand in crack ceiling, is that right, last year?
Yes. We had proposed twenty-five, and we ended up doing seventy-five. And, I mean, not that we don't need to do the crack ceiling, crack ceiling needs to be done. But, um, um, but it did absorb an additional fifty thousand dollars out of the general fund going into next year.
So, then, this budget, as we're looking at the, as we're looking at the streets and roads portion of it, the reduction of that, that is basically eliminating crack ceiling for a year, is that right?
The proposal would be is we would delay crack ceiling, which if you think, we would still be ahead of what our original plan was, but we would give our, ourselves an opportunity to restore the general fund more. In fact, that is a, the one largest significant return from the general fund.
So, how is the reduction here going to affect the police department?
Well, we cut back on a lot of our line item budgets, but they were just all small. I mean, the main way we're going to try is overtime. All our, most of our line items are just piddly, little thousand, you know, eight hundred, so.
You, from, from, there's only like a twenty, twenty-dollar reduction from the first one we got to this one for police, is that right?
Yes, yep.
Off our regular, yeah, I mean, we're going to try on the overtime, though. Maybe we couldn't put it down there, because I don't know what we can, can do. We took twenty-two hundred off the budget, but we're going to try to make it more than that with our overtime.
So, how will that affect coverage?
I'll try to adjust, you know, my hours. Yeah, it'd be less, there's going to be less police, you know, at certain times of the day, but.
So, do you foresee that as a problem?
No, no, we, I mean, we do it here and there, you know, when somebody takes vacation, or, you know, just try to implement it a little more. I don't see it being a problem. I'm just going to probably end up taking more of the call, so.
So, then, the budget that we are being, that we would be voting on in the community request area, so are we?
Right now, what is, what is in for the community request is what's the recommended line item.
So, we would have to amend?
Right. I did not present any proposed changes to the finance committee yesterday morning. So, there are no, uh, um, right now, that would not include any changes.
So, if we were to move adoption of the budget as presented, it would be the recommended community request unless we amended it to your updates?
Well, to whatever you want it.
Or to, I mean, unless we, unless we amended it, it would be the recommended ones that are
Yes.
Here.
Yes. If no changes are made to the budget, the recommended amounts will be the, the ones you see under the recommended line would be the ones that I would notify the entities that they're receiving.
You know, on the community requests, with regard to Kids World, I know they're here requesting funds ahead of time, you know, prior to even, you know, the expected time that they need the dollars. Then if we reduce that from twenty-five thousand down to twenty-two five, um, you know, they're already right on the edges it is. I, I question whether or not to pick that one in particular. I'm glad to see the rec center staying where it is, just compared to what it was, you know, in thirteen, fourteen.
The rest of them are little piddly things that
Yeah.
Chamber Main Street is a, is a hefty suggestion to be cut, cut to.
And that was the other one that I circled as well, too.
Well, for what it's worth, I did go to the Kids World board meeting last night, and that was definitely one of the topics that they were discussing is the shortfall in revenue, along with the changes of, of staff members. The long-term staff had left, and they're trying to determine a budget to come up with the salaries for those people and try to at least keep them here. So, that was one of the major, major topics of their meeting last night.
And even the one that they're going to hire to replace Jane?
Yeah, they don't know.
They're not going to overly take her by any means, in my opinion, but from what I heard.
That's right.
Yeah, and Chamber Main Street, you know, that's usually a challenge, isn't it, Steve?
It is a challenge.
You know, so.
You know, I, I'm going to say this year, our investment drive just kicked off last week. Uh, not being the president, I don't know what Bobby's feelings are towards the direction that they're going. They're trying some new things by doing more beneficial things, but overall, in budget talks that we had in December, we look forgiving to be down.
And she's not overpaid at the present time. I don't know how she does it for what she gets paid. She gets paid part-time salary, and she works triple time.
It, it's a, it's a tough road. I talked to the lady for Manning again today. Uh, she was up looking at our upper story in regards to their facade improvement that they're doing down there. She says, what do we do in western Iowa? And I said, you tell me.
And it's
You know, and they're concerned about the rollback that, that you're talking about. You know, right on down the line, where are these funds going to come from? Nobody knows.
And they, and truthfully, they're the group that provides opportunities for Main Street. I mean, they're, they're the one that plan the events that people come to, and if you want to give that up and give it to volunteers, I'll tell you something, there won't be any.
There won't be no
There won't be any, because it's hard enough the way it is, not in this day and age.
Okay, so without changing the recommended community request, it looks like the changes in here, we're talking about six thousand three hundred dollars, basically, which would be, in terms of the overall budget, we're talking, we're talking the amount of time we're spending here being one, for one percent. And I think maybe the, the potential for ill will is much greater than the potential for, for savings. I would move adoption of the budget with the recommended community request intact.
And setting of the public hearing?
And setting of the public hearing, yes.
To March eleven?
Leave them as, as the recommended, whether they updated.
Budget as is.
Right, okay.
I would second that.
Okay, good.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept the budget with the recommended community requests and also set the public hearing for March eleventh, two thousand fourteen. Would you call for a vote?
Okay. Councilperson Brenney?
Yes.
Councilperson McGinty?
Yes.
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
Councilperson Bruny?
Yes.
Councilperson Perry?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Motion carried. Great. Going on now to F, consideration of adoption, adoption of final city five-year capital improvement plan and set the public hearing date and time.
Uh, the date would, of course, be March eleventh, along with the other. Um, this is, um, for the most part, your major changes are going to be, as we kind of already mentioned earlier, um, you would see, um, um, crack ceiling, um, held, pushed back a year. That's primarily a major change. The other one is, is it would delay, um, a new lease arrangement for a new lawnmower, uh, for the Parks Department. Um, something we, we'd built in year over year, they would do to, uh, to, to buy a new one, and we would delay, we'd keep the old one and delay, uh, purchasing a new one for a year. That'd save twenty-five hundred dollars in extras budget as well. Those would be the major changes to your CIP plan.
So, the CIP on the, the quarter of a million for the fire truck in fourteen fifteen, that would be
That's always a wish.
That would be dependent upon getting a grant?
That's all, yes, and those FEMA grants usually cover nine, roughly ninety-five percent of the cost. The additional five percent would come out of the long-term, um, fire department capital fund that's collected by all the members of the twenty-eighty agreement. Um, that would, uh, there's ample amount of money to cover that five percent portion if they ever get the grant.
So, so, I mean, basically, that is in there for the purpose of being able to apply it.
Yes, and then what we would do is amend the budget at the end of the year to incorporate that into the actual budget if it does end up happening.
We should be so lucky.
Have that big new shiny, shiny red unit.
So, how long do we expect it to take for the gas meter replacement?
Right now, what he has left is primarily commercial entities. Um, it, it's more of an idea, Bruce, of staggering it out so we don't have quite as much of an impact in one particular year. We did talk with the manufacturer that if we committed to purchasing, say, a certain set amount of them, and then bled them off over a multiple-year deal, would he give us a price break based upon the entire quantity that we would purchase? Um, he did make commitments to us from that standpoint. So, we are getting the advantages of buying in bulk, but not actually paying for it until we take delivery of the quantities we take on an annual basis, so. You might, might be, might have already picked up on now, whether it be lease arrangements or purchase arrangements. I'm a real big supporter of leveling cost out rather than, uh, large chunk hits in our budget. I find it's easier to budget and plan and actually deal with some of, catching up on some of our maintenance and equipment replacements by using that type of practice. Playing with a bigger net.
Are there further questions?
I'll make a motion to adopt the final city five-year capital improvement plan and set the public hearing date and time.
For March eleventh?
For March eleventh.
Second. Go ahead.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the final city five-year capital improvement plan and set the public hearing date and time for March eleventh at five o'clock, five P M, two thousand fourteen. Would you call for a vote, please? Uh, would you call for a vote, please?
Councilperson Brenney?
Yes.
Councilperson McGinty?
Yes.
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
Councilperson Perry?
Yes.
Councilperson Bruning?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number five is public input on solid waste matters. Is there any public input? Item number six is the council forum.
I have two items I wanted to discuss. One of them's going to concern a fall, a, a letter, I'm likely, a second letter I'm probably going to be doing for the paper between now and the end of the week. Um, it has to do with something we're probably all aware of right now, and that is water lines. Um, there is a significant problem going on throughout, it seems like almost, most the northern part of the state right now. The freeze line is so low in the ground that it is actually freezing water, um, water incorporations. Um, we, right now, have a list of about a dozen homes and businesses that have no water, or, or are, are in the process of attempting to restore water service to them. Um, we've been trying all kinds of methods, steaming methods, electric methods, anything we can to break through the ice, um, the freezing to restore water service. Um, the, we're not having a whole lot of success. Um, for instance, the first one we dealt with was Eric Scholl's auto body, and it took us four days to restore water service to that location. Um, we're to the point now where we are practice, we are using a practice of even setting up some water services, um, through, um, hosings. We're actually setting up temporary water lines, in order to provide water service primarily to those who need it most. A lot of those will be enacted tomorrow. Uh, we were taking, working on that action today. Um, it's...
Won't they freeze?
Uh, well, that's part of the problem. We temper, we'd give them water service over certain hours of the day, but other parts of the day, you're not going to be able to use it.
If it freezes, it'll bust the thing off the house, and they'll flood it.
Right. I mean, it's not like it's going to be a situation where they can just leave it hooked up and forget about it on a daily basis. There's going to have to be certain, there's going to have to be certain customer interaction. Um, it's, uh, i- i- it is a serious problem. Now, there is a good thing coming, but it comes with a horrible silver lining, too. And that is, we're about to have a couple of days where the temperature's going to get above freezing. Sounds like a great prob- a great thing, but it's not, because it's going to drive the, the freeze line even deeper down into the ground, and we could see that when freezing conditions reemerge in, say, a week from now, we could go from twelve to fifty people that are having water service issues. Um, from DNR standpoint, we have a limited responsibility in these type of circumstances. It is an act of God situation. But, we also recognize that when it particularly comes to residents, that water is a vital resource, and that anything we can do to, to help retain, i- i- to keep people's water service, we're trying to take the steps to do it. It's funny, I just got down on Friday telling the General Fund-related entities to stop all overtime, and since I've done that, we've had two employees that I think have worked twenty-four hours a day for four days in a row, so it's not really a pretty picture out there, but we are committed to doing everything we can to help the people. Um, and we, all we ask is they please keep us updated. If they do have a freeze situation, please notify us, so we can try to assist them.
Is it certain parts of town?
No.
Or worse than other parts, or it's scattered throughout town?
It's scattered all throughout, uh, town. It, it's not in one particular location. Um, you know, I'm not going to say you're not going to go home tonight, and you might not have water, and, um, we...
I know.
So, uh, i- i- it, and, and the only, only reassurance, you know, they always say anguish enjoys company. The only reassurance we get in all this is we're not the only city dealing with this problem. Uh, it's everywhere right now, and...
Are there things that people can do to help?
Yes, um...
Keep your water running.
Like, if you let some water run, does that...
Yes, I actually now have a, have my, I actually have my, um, my bathroom sink set on a drip right now, uh, just to prevent it from, from the potential...
If you live one on a drip throughout your house, is that good enough, though?
There is a point when the weather gets to a point where...
Nothing helps them.
Nothing's going to prevent it, but...
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. But, there's a lot of homes where people work all day and they don't use a lot of water, and then, you know, it sits and no water's running through it. If you make them aware, and maybe they can really pay attention to it, it might help some.
I mean, I wonder if, if we could get public service announcement out somehow to say, "This is an issue, this is something that you could do to possibly prevent this."
Yeah.
Besides, we want to let the storm sewer feeds anyway, so please run more water.
Absolutely.
So, are, are you saying public service announcement, like, over the radio, or through Curtis?
Like, like, radio, um, um, I think we get something in the newspaper about it.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
I think the problem that some people feel is they feel, "Oh, we're going to get this stall period, and that's going to solve the problem." No, i- it actually can make the problem worse, and so...
Yeah, I mean, I think, anything we can do, maybe to get the word out to people, I mean, whether it's through social media, whether it's through newspaper, um...
What, what are some things they can do to help prevent this?
I would like to say that a drip at your house is not your only option, but, I mean, as far as your options go, right now...
You're talking about a water drip, not one you live with, right?
This one was like married, no.
Um, there's not a whole, I mean, it's all about keeping the water moving. Uh, I mean, that's, you, as you've seen in practice, a, a moving river does not freeze. Uh, it's, uh, it's all about movement, and, uh, unfortunately, the less water you use in your house, the more susceptible you are to having an issue.
Okay, so, you know, Curtis just came in and, and kind of update him on, on this as...
I'll be happy, talk to him after the meeting.
Talk to him afterwards.
Kind of bring him up.
So, anything that we can get through the newspaper, through...
Just add into the public...
The SAG News, um, you know, anything in a timely fashion, even if, you know, ra- radio might be a consideration. Obviously, days make a difference here, and anytime we can explain things in anticipation of, you know, the bad already happening, the more we can get it out there in anticipation of it, let the people know. People understand what's going on more.
Going into Monday morning, I was aware of about three. By the end of the day yesterday, I was aware of a dozen situations. It, it exploded on, by the end of the day Monday.
It could be sent out in, in a chamber newsletter, a lot of people get that, a lot of people get that, so it might be a way...
Or just, she, her newsletter's already out, just have her send out an email to everybody.
That's prob- that's kind of what I meant.
Yeah.
Not kind of, that is what I meant.
Yeah. I mean, even if we put, put a sign in here as people come in, I mean...
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
And perhaps if there are businesses downtown where you could just put a sign, you know, "This weather is, is really conducive to frozen water pipes. Frequently running water or side drip will help alleviate..."
Some of the risk.
Some of the risk.
Not all, but...
Curtis and Dale, do you have any suggestions, other than what we've talked about, for getting this information out? And, and I'm sorry, I apologize to Curtis, because we're kind of bringing him in to the, at the end of the discussion.
What about frozen water lines?
Not necessarily in houses, but from the main to the houses.
Not the city line, the, the personal property?
Personal, right. But, it goes from the main water line to their houses, yeah.
We do not have any reports of mains freezing so far.
But, that may happen.
So far, being the African village.
So far, is the...
Yeah.
If anyone comes up with an idea or suggestion, you know, don't be, hesitate to communicate that with us.
I'm continuing to pay for play, pray for March. I, I keep saying, "Oh, we only have eighteen more days this month."
March can be worse than...
Eighteen more...
March can be worse than that.
Now, don't bust my bubble, Teresa, I'm trying to get boo boo.
Yeah.
There's a reason they call it that.
You said you had two items for the council forum?
Oh, the other one, thank you, Bruce. The other one was, we had discussed at our last, um, um, meeting, our, um, work session meeting, about having a follow-up meeting. Um, I didn't know if any of you guys might have some ideas or some days that might work for you. Um, I thought this would be a good chance. So, do you want me to just have Annette start bugging you guys and put together a meeting? Would that be more conducive for you guys, so you have your calendars in front of you?
Probably.
Okay, expect tomorrow, you'll start hearing Annette calling you and abusing you for a day.
Yeah, it was fun.
Start of the day.
I mean, we...
Is there any warning? If we could just set it to an hour, it's going to be better, because then, I'm not sure.
We talked about fourth Thursday, possibly. Was that, I mean, it's kind of at the end of the, you know, talked about maybe setting something up on a regular basis and...
That way, if people wanted to come, they would know about it when it's regularly going to be.
Yeah.
Might be more conducive to having people come if they wanted to.
That is primarily what I had.
So, anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. Would you call for a vote, please?
Let's see, Gary and Teresa. Uh, councilperson Brenney?
Yes.
Councilperson Bruning?
Yes.
Councilperson Perry?
Yes.
Councilperson McGinty?
Yes.
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.